We're live.
Yes, sir.
Everybody knows.
Morning Connor.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to call the order this public meeting of Board of Johnson County Commissioners on this Monday, May eighth, two thousand twenty-three at ten o'clock AM. Please pray with us if you care to, and then we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Would you bow with me for a moment of prayer, please? Dear Heavenly Father, we just celebrated the National Day of Prayer, and we do thank you so much for all of the prayers that you answer on our behalf each and every day. I do, Lord, I can't help but thank you, the adage that Saint Francis gave us when he said that we need to pray thirty minutes every day. And if you're too busy to pray thirty minutes, you need to pray for an hour. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Opening of sealed bids for the Johnson County Sheriff's Office Crisis Intervention Team Edition Project.
Okay, the first bid is from Dewees Construction, D E W E E S Construction Incorporated. Their bid is five hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars, no cents, five four six one nine zero point zero zero. There is a note here includes snow melt material, deduct three thousand seven hundred and forty dollars to delete, three seven four zero. The second bid is from Duke Commercial. Their bid is for six hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred dollars, six one two two zero zero point zero zero. Their note on snow melt is for all one is eleven thousand, eleven or one one zero 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 point zero zero.
I'd make a motion to get him to Wes to review along with Commissioner Baird and come back at our next meeting with a recommendation.
Second. I have a motion, second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Thank you for the bids on that. Frank on American Legion Post two oh five, the Field of Crosses for May twenty-first through June fourth, two thousand twenty-three, and then Memorial Day Program, May twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Is there anyone here to speak on that?
I'd move to approve, I imagine it's just like they do every year, so I would move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, is there any pending on that?
The hold on was just drafted, it's been sent to them, so I'm not really pending legal.
A motion, second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And then we have the U.S. Small Business Administration here for disaster assistance update, if you would care to come forward, please, and thank you for being here.
You're welcome, thank you for having us. Good morning, my name is Davani Burgess, and I am the Public Affairs Specialist for the Small Business Administration. And we're here, when I say we, the federal family, SBA and FEMA, we're here to give you a disaster update. So I want to say thank you Commissioner Rawls, Commissioner Baird, and Commissioner West and the staff here in Johnson County for having us to provide you the update. Now, as of today, my numbers that we have for as homeowners and renters, there are a total of eleven applications that has been received here in Johnson County. For as businesses, we have a total of four applications that has been received. And the economic injury disaster assistance loans, we have one and we call that the idol, so which will be a total of sixteen. But here in the disaster recovery area in Indiana, in the state for this disaster, we have two point five billion dollars loads that had been approved statewide for disaster cover areas. For as referrals, we have over twelve hundred that has been referred to the Small Business Administration. But I also would like to express with the numbers that we would like to see all those survivors that have been affected here in Johnson County to please come in and register before the deadline. The deadline is June the fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. And so providing this information, I just wanted to let the commissioners know where we are for us to update. And another thing that I would like to share with the commissioners and the staff, that the survivors do not have to wait for their insurance to be approved. Because that's a long process, and so for them to get back on their feet as soon as they would like, we would like for them to come in to register and then come and put your application. So we'd like to encourage all the survivors here in Johnson County to come to the disaster recovery centers that we have here in Johnson County. We have a business recovery center located at the God, I think it's God Assembly of Church. No, I think it's God or Christ, I'm not quite sure the name, but it's God Assembly of Church here in Johnson County. And also we have a disaster recovery center here in Johnson County with the Transportation Department. So we have two here in Johnson County. And without further ado, I would like to use some of my time to my FEMA family. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone, my name is Robert Bantolano, I'm an External Affairs Officer with FEMA, part of a much larger team that is on the ground helping all of the survivors across the counties that were affected by the recent storms. Since April fifteenth, over one point three million dollars has been approved in FEMA assistance for Indiana to start the recovery. Keyword, start the recovery. It is very important to, for the constituency to understand that what the federal government does is that we come in and we provide them with that incentive to make sure that they are getting back to their new normal. So as part of that process, basically, we ask them to apply with FEMA, and as part of that FEMA process is to also apply for an SBA. So in addition to the federal grants that they're getting, they get an opportunity to secure, if you will, a federal credit line, if you want to think those terms, by way of a disaster loan. These are low income, low interest, rather, low interest, long-term disaster loans. I'm making an emphasis on that being that SBA went in first, because the bulk of the recovery dollar is with SBA. And so FEMA is there to make sure that we provide them that door into that federal assistance, and we have done so, and we continue to do so with, we have up until today, ten disaster recovery centers, seven as of last Friday, three opened up over the weekend, and those will continue to open as the days continue until the last disaster survivor has been seen. The deadline, again, we stress it, is June the fourteenth. We ask survivors who have not applied to do so now, do not wait, as time obviously is required in order for us to have that conversation, which brings us to the next point. By now, your constituents are getting a letter, which is a determination letter. That letter typically asks for a next step, what is it that we need in terms of information, whether it is a complete phone number or social security number, or to correct a disaster damage address. However, that letter is titled Declination Letter, and they normally get stuck on the title. We encourage every citizen who has received that letter to come see us at a disaster recovery center. Every case is different, we need to look at their case and see what the next step is in order to reactivate their account. It's not the end of the road, but the beginning of the conversation. Hence the reason I'm making emphasis on the point where we are in the response, at that stage where people are getting those letters, and they may get the wrong impression that they're not getting assistance, as opposed to they need to come see us. And those who have not applied, the urgency to make sure they do so before the fourteenth. Subject to your questions, we're going to remain in the room, so if there is any other question, please do let us know. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to take an extra few seconds to introduce myself. I'm Lydia Glaze, I'm with External Affairs, I'm your intergovernmental specialist. I've sent all the commissioners, Commissioner Rawlsburg and Wes this morning, just emails introducing myself, making sure that you have access directly to me, and as you know what we do, we're just the liaison from FEMA back down to our local government. So again, it's a pleasure to be in your county today, and it's a pleasure to work with you guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
No, I think, I'm sure they've got it out on all kinds of social media, you've got it out in the paper, I'm sure you've seen this before, and thank you for your assistance.
I know, in speaking with Stephanie in the past, we've had really good response from FEMA and the state, and we do appreciate all the help that you're getting out to us, and the information is probably most important. So we know what it is and how to guide those people in that direction, so thank you very much for coming, we do appreciate it. Elected officials and department heads, Basia. Excuse me, I'm losing my voice.
Hi, Lauren Rainier, San Basia Director, I need the approval to apply for a grant at the Blue River Foundation.
To approve.
Second. I have a motion, a second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Recorder, approval to attend the annual Fiddler Symposium, May twenty-second through twenty-four, two thousand twenty-three, in Davenport, Iowa.
Davenport, Iowa.
Yeah.
Been there.
Yeah. John Deere?
No. College.
Oh, okay. Theresa Pietro, County Recorder, this is one that we intend every year, this is one that has fifteen states. And there was a correction in my letter, it's hundred and forty-six miles, not a hundred and forty-six dollars for transportation, but everything that hotel, which is at a redo straight, and that mileage is provided for the three days.
Move to approve.
Second. A motion, second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Have fun. Tell me if you find someplace.
Work, yeah.
Court Services Ratification, the Indiana Office Court Services, two thousand twenty-four Veterans Court Grant, Grant Application, this is ratification.
Yes, hi, Sheena Johnson Court Administrator, I emailed you guys almost exactly two weeks ago, because we realized this opportunity was coming up. It was due like a week and a half ago, so just requesting ratification of that application.
I approve. Second.
I have a motion, a second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sheena.
Sheriff, approval of the cooperative agreement with attorney job, Atterbury Job Corps Center, and approval of maintenance contract and lease agreement with Brayden Office Equipment pending legal.
Well, Burgess, Johnson County Sheriff, he's been with legal, I think we're just waiting on signatures at this point. Yep.
I'd move to approve, and you also need to shave.
We pay our money for the no shave.
All year long.
All year long.
I have a motion, a second, to approve both, last one pending legal.
Shaving got in the way.
I appreciate the other two commissioners, thank you.
Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I like it, Sheriff, keep it up. But when it hits your chest, though, you know, we'd probably have to talk about it, right? Yeah. I don't know if we pay that much. Planning and zoning, Berry Chase Subdivision, Section One.
For the record, Richard Hoover, planning engineer for Johnson County, Berry Chase Section One is located on the west side of Berry Road, approximately a thousand feet south of Smith Allen Road on the south side of Sugar Grove Elementary School. Section One is part of a seventy-seven lot subdivision and has a total of forty lots on nineteen point two acres with access on the Berry Road and a proposed connection to the Deerfield subdivision, the plans of Section One, which we approved two weeks ago. Drainage will be accomplished via stormwater management system, which would drain runoff to the west side of the site into a proposed detention facility that will also provide water quality. We're seeking approval of the construction plans, the Patriot Engineering Contract, and acceptance of Forms twelve and thirteen with the fees associated with testing and inspection services.
Dick, exactly how are they handling the drainage to the west of this? I worked with that neighborhood there to the west on a number of occasions, and now all of the ground drains towards that subdivision to the west of it. And how do they plan on handling that, because it's been a real nuisance to the homeowners that have bought it.
Right. Again, it's a detention facility, and it meets the old standards, not the new standards. It will connect into existing storm sewers that run through that subdivision, Brentwood, I think is the name of it.
Yeah.
And into their detention facility and through that. Again, it's the reduced rates from a hundred-year proposed to ten-year existing, ten-year proposed to two-year existing.
Because that, the retention pond for Brentwood tends to overflow. They've had a number of problems there, so I'd be concerned about that.
Okay, well, this will reduce the amount of water that's coming to them from what basically was an active farm field.
How does it reduce it?
Through the detention facility.
Yeah, but once the retention facility is full, then it's just, it's the same, isn't it?
And, well, it doesn't stay full, it empties over a period of time. I think within forty-eight hours, it recovers ninety percent of its volume.
Okay, I'm just concerned about that, because I know I'm going to hear from the.
Okay. We looked at everything, we had the developer, the engineer, look at what happens when an emergency spillway is active, goes through there, and it gets within, I think it's nine inches of the finished floor for the emergency spillway running through a couple of, in between two houses through there.
Well, one bit of relief they'll get is all the cornstalks that used to wash off of that farm field and their, their street drains, so.
Right.
All right, well, thank you.
Sure.
I'd go ahead and move to approve.
Second. And motion, second, to approve, any further?
Yeah, Ron, I want to say, a lot of these subdivisions that we run into with the drainage board, we just capture that water off that farm field instead of sheet draining into these neighborhoods, and it concentrates it, slows it down for the slow release that manages that water. And it's, we've had this numerous times within the drainage board, have to look at this, and neighbors say the same thing, it's always flooded. Well, we're going to try and stop that by retaining it on that site and then slowly releasing down downstream, so.
I understand the principle, all I'm saying is that.
Volume's still there.
The volume's there, and it accelerates it because the impervious areas you create with the rooftops and the driveways and the streets, and so they accelerate the runoff, and once that retention pond makes its maximum, where it begins to outflow, then there is no retention. And then all of that water continues on into the next subdivision, so I, most of the retention ponds I've, I witnessed, don't receive much. They, you know, the groundwater in Indiana is, it has actually increased about five feet over the last several years. So that a lot of these retention, detention ponds aren't receding, they're staying pretty full. And that's, a lot of people have a misconception, once it's full, then everything that goes into it continues out the other side, so there is no retention, so. And now this might be a different scenario, I don't know, we'll wait and see, I guess, but if that becomes the situation where this one is full and continues to stay full, and then when you get a heavy rain, you're accelerating the runoff because of the impervious areas. I'm just concerned about what's going to happen, and the retention pond for Brentwood is actually, it outflows into a pipe that the next subdivision is responsible for maintaining.
Together.
Yeah, we went through a battle with that, trying to get them to take care of that, but anyway, we'll see, I guess, if it becomes a problem, it might have to be addressed down the road. I don't know how you would address it at that point, that's my concern. We'll have Dick take care of it, I guess.
Sure.
Thank you again.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dick.
I'm assuming these gentlemen and a friend are with this project.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, guys, for showing up.
Highway approval of execution of change order one for Bridge one thirty-six project.
Good morning, Daniel Johnston, Highway Engineer. This is for, requesting your approval of change order for, number one, for Bridge one thirty-six, this is on Peterman Road between Fairview and County Line. This is more of a formality on our part, this is between, since this is an NDOT-funded project, this is a time change for the contractor, it's actually reducing the overall contract duration, reducing it by ninety-two days from April of twenty-four to, I'm sorry, from July of twenty-four through April of twenty-four, the actual construction time and the closure time will not change, this is more of a paperwork issue. So I'm requesting your approval and execution.
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion, a second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you very much.
Board of Commissioners, ratification, item, construction stormwater sign certification.
That's what Kevin signed.
This is, I think, what I signed with IDM for Health and Corners Office.
Yep.
And there'll be other paperwork coming up for the mental health facility, that I would just ask permission to sign off representative of the county.
To move. Second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval fee proposal with Crossroad Engineers PC for the Highway Department, Saltborne Demo and Relocation Project. In fact, let's just, if we could approve both the number two and three approvals.
Yeah, they're all tying it together, I would move to approve.
Second. I have a motion, a second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Acceptance of lowest quote, award of contract pursuant to IC thirty-six dash one dash twelve dash four point seven for Johnson County Fairgrounds paving project pending legal.
Okay, we had three quotes, proposals, rather, the first one is from Globe Asphalt Paving Company Incorporated. Their bid price is ninety-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars and no cents, nine five five nine two point zero zero. The second proposal is from Milestone Contractors LP. Their quote is for a one hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred dollars, no cents, one two one seven zero zero point zero zero.
Box tape.
They gave me just a millimeter of room here to get the later. The last one's from Dave O'Mara Contractor Incorporated, their bid is for a hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty-nine cents, one three two four three five point five nine.
I would give these commissioner, I would move to give these to Commissioner Baird to review, he's been involved with Fairgrounds, so I'd let him review and come back at our next meeting with a recommendation.
Second. I have a motion, a second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and just, point of order, this, these, the paving will be accomplished under the twenty-one and twenty-two GOBs.
Okay.
Yeah, so this has already been in the plans, it's just now getting it, finally getting it done, so. It should make a really nice effect for the fairgrounds, getting those areas.
Down the dust cloud there.
Yeah, this, this should be, it's really, really needed, but anyway, thank you. Ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash oh dash nine, ordinance authorizing distribution and expenditure of the proceeds of Johnson County's grant from the American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand twenty-three on the subject Health Department Corner Facility.
Approved.
I would second.
I have a motion, a second, any further?
Just wanted to say, just so general public knows, it's six point five million dollars for the new Health and Corners building that is paid for with the ARPA funding, so we approve that and moving forward, which it will take us twenty, twenty-five years in the future.
We hope so, maybe longer.
Hopefully, it's longer, but I'm going to set it at twenty to twenty-five years.
I have a motion, a second, on that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, just another good example of how we're properly using the ARPA funds and doing good, good things with those funds. Number six, approval of lowest bin award of contract for Johnson County Health Department Corners Office, Bull Construction Management, Inc., pending legal. And this would be for the process of starting it.
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any further?
Pending legal.
Pending legal.
It's all in red.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. I suppose, motion carries, new no business, approval of interlocal agreement with NDOT for I sixty-nine casing.
Just curious on that, the cost. What does that entail?
Boring it underneath sixty-nine, new interstate.
Boring it, so.
And it's, you just spoke earlier about the high water table, and it had to be hydroboarded and it had to be water, it was.
We couldn't get that before they.
It is, this is before, but they still had to, they still had to, water is so high over there.
But they still had to board if it's before paving?
I don't, put it this way, Luke and I went on the search for it one day, and I couldn't find it. There's a manhole cover on one, on the east end of that, and we walked up and down sixty-nine, and I couldn't find it, so. Put it this way, if they didn't put it in there, they will board, but I don't know if they boarded or if they actually dug this out, I would say they probably boarded, just keep the soil integrity before they put the interstate in.
This was also paid for at ARPA as well.
Yeah, this was done at ARPA also.
Yeah, I understand that, but I just, costs just seemed awful high to me.
I was looking for two of them, but I stopped at one.
Yeah.
It's just so imperative, you know, our problems to be able to get across the interstate at a later date is, it would cost five times as much.
Yeah, there's no question.
But I still haven't seen the manhole, so. I'm assuming it's there, but you can work with the utilities at a later date, Ron, because they want to, they want to use this for accessing as much as we get treated unfairly by the utility companies.
We should get some.
We get recovery on that.
Yeah.
All right, move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, pending legal, any, not pending legal, sorry, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, claims.
Move to approve.
I just felt the earth shake.
Did you feel it? Did you feel the tremor? Second. It's usually a twenty-minute dissertation of the claims, so thank you, Commissioner.
I have a motion second. I don't want to go now.
Yeah, I was kind of sent back to.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
There is a God.
It's the goatee. Keep it up. It needs to get good and long. Commissioner, first minute approval, four ten twenty-three regular meeting and four twenty-four twenty-three regular meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion a second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Any public comment? Or it's a line stream clear?
I just want to take the opportunity to thank all of our various departments. It seems like I'm always calling one or the other, looking for something, and they're so responsive and quick to help out. I appreciate it. That's for all of the departments, the treasurer, the recorder, planning and zoning, that has done a great job. Thank all of you for that. Especially Angel there, Bud Purdy the other day, you think.
I would thank you too, save us twenty minutes of meeting.
I don't know what to do now. I'll take a motion.
To adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion a second, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.